So again, welcome for and thank you for being here to our candidates as well as to those of you in the room. I just saw you in three D, but just as a quick recap, we are gonna gather today on Zoom and beam ourselves into the audience to protect everyone's health and safety. So thanks for everyone for your flexibility in making this happen. Mary just opened us up with some remarks, used up the stage and reminded us that all of our communities are aging around the globe and Seattle and King County is no different. And we're living longer, which is wonderful, and it means that we may be living longer with disabilities. And so really inviting our future elected leaders to help us think about how do we make a city age friendly is why we are here today. And giving community members an opportunity to get to know their future elected leader, ask questions, hear their thoughts on issues that are important to them. Just again, to underscore that this forum is not an endorsement or an indication of support from Age Friendly Seattle or any of our co-sponsoring organizations for one candidate or another. It's a purely educational event. Age Friendly Seattle is a citywide initiative and we are charged with making our city a great place to grow up and grow old, which is a great motto. And as part of that, we really believe that it's important to foster dialogue between our community members and the elected leaders. So that's why we're here today. We're also hoping it's an opportunity for our candidates to learn about issues that are important to older adults. So here's how today's program will work. And again, thanks for everyone pivoting. So folks in the audience, thank you for all of the incredible questions that you submitted when you RSVP'd. We received a lot of great questions. I have done my best to group those by theme and to rephrase some of those when necessary. So my hope is that people will hear their issues addressed, even if you don't hear your exact question repeated verbatim. According to your short survey that people took when you RSVP'd, three issues really rose to the top in terms of what you want to learn about, which was housing, public safety and transportation. So we'll spend some time on those as well as touch on some other issues. I'm gonna invite each candidate to make a short opening statement before we proceed to Q and A. Each candidate will have two and a half minutes for their answers, which is not a lot of time on some of these very meaty issues. So encourage people to keep the dialogue going after this debate and keep, um, keep engaging with your candidates and their campaigns. We'll alternate which candidate starts first in an effort with fairness. If audience members have additional questions, so I am physically here in the building, although I'm not in the room with you. If you do have questions or something pops to mind during this conversation, folks in the room have pieces of paper being passed around, you can write your question down and someone will come pass it to me. And I'll do my best to weave it in. Can't promise we'll have time for everything, but we'll do what we can. And then finally, I want to remind folks in the audience that we both campaigns today are accepting democracy vouchers and we really encourage you to use those. But we do have staff from our City of Seattle Ethics Department in the room, high-fitting. Uh, and they can answer any questions you have about the details. But every year voters in Seattle are mailed a packet that includes a $100 democracy voucher. This is an effort to, um, put electoral into the power of, or the hands of electoral power into the hands of everyday people. Not only people with access to money. And it's really working. So prior to this program, only about 1% of Seattleites were political donors. And since the program's inception, that has risen to 10%. So more and more people are getting engaged, which is great. So you have an opportunity to give one of these candidates or both of these candidates a voucher today. So with that, I think I'll get us going here. And the first question, and I'm, I'm still keeping an ear out for someone to let me know. We're all working, but since no one has come in and stopped me, I think we're okay. But folks in the room, please do let us know if we're having any technical problems. Our first question today that I'm gonna start with is the topic of safety, because this was really something that we saw a lot of questions submitted about. People want to know your thoughts on how to improve safety for older adults and people with disabilities on public transportation, at bus stops and other places around the district that are experiencing an upsurge in personal and property crime. I want to read you a quote from one person. "Many seniors are afraid to be out on the streets near 45th after dark. Those who no longer drive are unwilling to take public transit with stops on 45th, so are no longer able to attend evening events. What would you do to ensure public safety in this area? And I'll ask you in a moment your specific thoughts on Seattle's Police Department as well as the council's recent vote on criminalizing drug use. So for now, please share with the audience how you would approach public safety for older adults specifically in this district and any other general thoughts you'd like to share on this topic. And I'm sorry, someone just reminded me that I skipped right over opening statement. So why don't I pause here? I will re-ask you the question after a statement. But I want to give the candidates a chance to introduce themselves, of course. So Ron, why don't I start with you? And I'm gonna keep time on my phone. It's to the best of my ability. And I'll give you a wave when we're getting close to time.
Wonderful. Uh, thank you so much, Dinah. Thank you for, uh, having us in today and adapting. Yeah, thank you, Maritza, for adapting. I'm sorry that you're not feeling well. I was saying to Maritza earlier, you know, it's been going through my family. It's going through all of our families. And, you know, for folks campaigning, we really grind ourselves down and, uh, and it makes us vulnerable. And I'm glad that we're in a place where we're all working hard to keep from getting each other sick. So I'm also really appreciated your hospitality today as I've been here. And it's been fun to run into so many of you that I've already run into, uh, didn't know I had, right? That I would be running into so many familiar faces from doors and light rail stations and other events. So, thank you. Uh, so I am Ron Davis. I am running for City Council for District Four, obviously, and that is this district. Includes, uh, pretty much all of Northeast Seattle, Roosevelt, Ravenna, Bryant, Laurelhurst, Maple Leaf, Wedge, parts of Maple Leaf, Wedgewood, View Ridge, et cetera, and then also over here, yeah, everything in Wallingford, south of 50th, all the way over to 99. So some, some Fremont or Freelingford, whatever you'd like to call it as well. You know, I am running because I want this to be a city where anybody from any background can start a career, raise a family and age in place safely and while thriving without breaking the bank. Uh, and that's really, really difficult to do. Um, and a little bit about why I have that passion. So I didn't start in a place like Seattle. Uh, my parents were teenagers when they got pregnant with me. And, um, I, you know, that was a very, very hard time. Uh, unions, uh, were being busted at the time. So my dad was not able to get a good union job. My parents both worked at a diner. Uh, my dad actually took a pay cut and went to minimum wage to get a job at a factory. So he would have benefits. You know, worked 60, 70, 80 hours a week for 10 years, uh, while my mom was working and we were working hard. They were working hard. I was just there, uh, making things more difficult, I'm sure. Uh, but they were working hard, uh, to scrape something together for us. But the big difference then was that housing was more affordable for, uh, for, uh, for working wage people. And so they were able to eventually get a house and that provided the stability for my sister and I to have long-term relationships and build community around us in our schools with extended family. And that really held us up and brought us up and became the way that we both went on to get bachelor's degrees. I got very lucky and sort of drew the golden ticket and ended up at Harvard Law School. Um, and, uh, you know, graduated and have been in the tech world and doing policy work as a volunteer, uh, and board member for statewide organizations, regional organizations, local organizations. We'll talk about those in a second. But, um, you know, I landed in Northeast Seattle. I love it. I chose to raise my family here. I am married to a wonderful family doctor who, uh, is an FPOB, which is family physician that also does obstetrics, uh, up at Kaiser. Name is Trina Davis and two little boys, Corin and Dane, who are seven and 11. Uh, one's at Bryant and one just started at X-Stein. So we're also ingesting middle school right now and he has started riding the public bus. Uh, so I have this extra bit of sensitivity to a question that I know is coming. And, uh, you know, I care a lot about my community and for a long time I've just tried to serve it by being a volunteer on the board of the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association, working on safe streets and healthy businesses and clean neighborhoods. On the board at the YMCA, working to make sure that our, um, you know, our local neighbors are fed and kids are getting great after-school care. And then at Seattle Subway and, uh, Futurewise, working on land use and transit. So I'm here to try to make this a place where people can rise and where we take care of people when they get unlucky. And that's why I'm running. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, Ron, for that. And, um, in the interest of fairness again, so I gave Ron three minutes. So Maritza, I'll do the same for you. And, uh, send your reminder in the chat when you're getting 20 seconds left.
Thank you, Dinah. Um, and, and thank you, everyone, for pivoting, uh, uh, so that I could join you today. Um, I'm, I'm very sad and I couldn't be there in person, but we, uh, all need to protect each other and I don't want to spread my cold around. So thank you. I, I really appreciate the pivot. And I will say, I'm Maritza Rivera. I'm running for Seattle City Council in District Four. Um, I'm the mother of two, uh, teenagers at Ingram High School, where there was a school shooting in the fall and a child got, um, shot and killed. And as I was waiting for my kids in the parking to come out of, um, lockdown, I was in the parking lot. And I, you know, it was a frightening experience. I thought the public safety situation, uh, in Seattle has gotten to be such where I can't just sit around and watch what's happening without trying to help and do something about it. When Alex Peterson decided not to run again, I decided to get into the race for this reason. Public safety really is my number one, uh, priority. I, um, moved to Seattle 22 years ago, um, uh, because it was safe and it was vibrant. Um, and the Seattle today is not the Seattle of 22 years ago. And I want to work together with other city council members and the mayor to get Seattle back on track into the safe and vibrant city that I moved to 22 years ago. My parents were originally from Puerto Rico. They were very poor. They came to the mainland, to New York City, to the Bronx for opportunity. My dad had odd and ends jobs until he finally landed, um, a union job in a factory. And because of my dad's union job at that factory, we were able to have food on our table and a roof over our head. We lived paycheck to paycheck, um, but we at least had, like I said, food on the table. I was able to get a full scholarship to, to college. Um, and then went on to law school. And after law school, I've spent the last 30 years in public service trying to lift up others, um, uh, who are, you know, underserved. When I was growing up in the Bronx, it was predominantly a low-income, black and brown, uh, neighborhood. Um, and where, where I didn't feel safe going, uh, from home to my school, uh, and being in the neighborhood. And so public safety is something that is really close to my heart. Um, and it's something I really deeply care about because of that experience. I, uh, you know, I got out of the Bronx, getting out of a low-income situation is very difficult. I got out of the Bronx, but a lot of my peers didn't. And so I've spent the last 30 years trying to help pull others up. Because, uh, I know what it feels like to try to get out of that situation. I've served two mayoral administrations. I worked for a city council member, Tom Rasmussen, when he was, uh, on the city council. I've worked for the ACLU in town on, uh, post nine 11, on Know Your Rights education, uh, campaign when they were getting targeted by the FBI. Um, and I've worked in the Clinton White House and for the US Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, uh, back east before I moved to Seattle 22 years ago. Thank you so much.
Thank you both for sharing a little bit more about yourselves. So I was so eager to ask you questions, I jumped right in. So I want to go back to that now. Um, and just also let you know that, um, our colleague Eldad is gonna be giving you a time check in the chat. She'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left and then when time is up. So there's no one in the back with a card, but we will do this in step. So, um, first question still stands and I'll just rephrase the question so that you have it fresh. And I think we'll, let's start with Ron for this one and then Maritza will start with you for the next question. So the question is, you know, in a moment, I will ask you more specifically for your thoughts on Seattle's Police Department as well as on the city council's recent vote to, um, criminalizing drug use. And for now, we'd like your thoughts on how you would approach public safety for older adults specifically in this district? And how, and any other general thoughts you have to share on the topic of public safety?
So can I ask a clarifying question before we start, start the timer? So there will be a future question on specifically drug-related issues and a future question on police accountability. Okay. All right. So I'll try not to dive into those too heavily, even though they're obviously related, but there's so much to talk about. Okay. Well, thank you so much. Um, well, as, as a longtime member of this district, raising children here and, uh, married to a, uh, a wonderful but five foot two vulnerable spouse, um, I think a lot about public safety. Uh, the week we moved in here, uh, we, there was a murder across the street from our house, uh, over a decade ago. I'm sorry, from, from our school, our son's childcare, there has been a murder across the street from our house over in Roosevelt Ravenna area. Um, and I've been body spat and, uh, body checked, uh, spat on, chased, had myself threatened, uh, had my children threatened. So, you know, this is, this real, real stuff that we experience on a regular basis. And as I mentioned, now I've had an 11-year-old riding a Metro bus. Um, and I have friends who are bus drivers and we have had relationships with locals who, uh, were unhoused. You know, we've kind of heard a lot of, a lot of very hard things and seen a lot of very hard things. Um, so this is a very serious issue. And unfortunately, uh, public safety is not a simple issue, right? It's an issue that, uh, is what, what they call a wicked problem. And so, uh, we have to, the solution is complex, but, um, but we do know what is helpful. So, you know, if I were to try to boil it down, I would, I would think of it in a sort of a, a prevention standpoint. Um, and then sending the rapid sort of right emergency response. There, uh, and then making sure that when we're doing those right responses, making sure they're healthy, that we'll set aside like, uh, policing for a second. And then kind of last, uh, you know, rehabilitating people where we can. So starting with prevention. You know, we know, uh, there's, of course, getting at the roots of, uh, of the safety crisis is important, but it's gonna take a long time for those fixes to work, right? When we're doing these upstream investments and things like housing and desegregating our neighborhoods and having better schools, that does pay off in the long term. Doesn't pay off super fast in the short term. So we have to do that, but we also have to do the stuff that works now. And so that includes investments in things like, uh, community violence intervention, which is really, really good at reducing gun violence. And it's always the first thing that sort of comes up on the chopping block when there's a budget shortfall. That we also need to, uh, invest, uh, you know, aggressively in things like tiny homes, get people out of parks. And then we need to right, right-size our response, uh, in an emergency. So that means staffing the police department and building up a behavioral health, uh, crisis response and using cameras for enforcement. So police are available. I will say I'm endorsed by H, the Bus Drivers Union. My Moms Demand Action and Alliance for Gun Responsibility have given me their distinction awards. I'm Dom Davis at Community Passageways, the violence prevention program, uh, has endorsed me as his least do guard at LEAD, which works with law enforcement on getting people into diversion. So, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Ron. Maritza?
Yes, thank you. Um, the public safety issues, as, as I said earlier, really near and dear to me because it's the reason why I, I got into this race to begin with. You know, I will say, uh, I think part of the question when you first posed it, there was, uh, a, a reference to 45th. And my kids went to Cascadia Elementary in the Lincoln Building off of 45th, um, uh, when they were younger. So I'm familiar with the issues up on 45th and Wallingford. But all our major, uh, in all our neighborhoods in the D4, there have been, uh, you know, public safety issues that I know are older adults and we've all been facing with, uh, or have been facing. I think, you know, I know we're gonna get into the policing bid and the drug use, uh, the drug possession, uh, law. But I will, and that is very intertwined. But I will say there are things that we, um, can be doing in terms of alternatives to policing, particularly in transportation. So we need to be working with sound transit and metro, um, on the light rail and the buses and making sure that we're keeping those places safe for, for folks. You know, I know Sound Transit has the Fair Ambassadors and I think that that having, uh, Fair Ambassadors onboard the light rail keeps things safer for folks and we need to continue to have those alternatives to policing, if you will. We do need to address, um, the homelessness issue, uh, because we know that our unhoused neighbors, we need to get folks into shelter. Um, that makes things safer for them and for everyone, um, uh, that lives near those encampments. It's inhumane to leave people live, living on the streets. So, um, I support permanent supportive housing with wraparound services. Uh, but until those units get built, we really need to have alternatives, uh, temporary alternatives like temporary sheltering, hoteling and tiny homes. Um, the, the firefighters tell me the tiny homes are working very well. I feel proud to be endorsed by the firefighters. And this is something we need to do more of and we need to do more of alternatives to policing because we know we don't always need a police officer when someone is experiencing mental health crisis or drug addiction. So expanding things like Health One, I think also helps keep things safer for folks. And then also just, um, along with that, uh, uh, the firefighters are talking about having landing zones where they can bring people. I think all those things also go toward, um, public safety and keeping the neighborhoods, uh, safe for everyone.
Thank you. And I'm just gonna, um, keep us moving and Maritza, I'll let you answer this one first. So what is your reaction to the recent vote by city council that will make drug dealing, uh, a criminal offense?
Yes, thank you, Dinah. I support the drug possession law because we need more tools in our toolbox for shutting down the open-air drug markets that we're seeing across the city, including in the D4. This is, you know, folks that are, are have addiction or struggling with addiction need services. Um, and so this law is not about putting drug users in jail, but it is about shutting down the open drug air markets that are keeping things unsafe. And, uh, having another mechanism for making sure that we're, um, putting drug dealers in jail as well. And so both those things are really important. And for those reasons, I support having more tools in our toolbox. So that's my reaction, my reaction to that. And I'm assuming we're gonna have a, a, a question about police in general. But, but drug possession law is another tool in our toolbox for being able to address and shut down these open-air drug markets that are really have taken a hold across the city, um, in our district and also downtown. All of Third Avenue right now, um, is a real problem and it makes it unsafe for folks that want to visit downtown. When I'm at the doors, folks are telling me they don't want to go downtown because they don't feel safe. And so we need to be able to address that. And this is another tool we can have in our toolbox for that.
Thank you, Ron.
So, uh, you know, as this law was coming up, I sat down with a number of judges, uh, criminal law experts, retired judges, uh, psychiatric experts. People like Lisa Dugard at LEAD, who's actually crafting the policies with the police to get people, uh, diverted into treatment and who also has endorsed me. And of course, this is another sort of wicked problem, but I think we know that the public health response is the most effective. And, uh, this law, um, whether this will help with the public health response or hinder it, it's, it remains an open question based on kind of what comes next. So its critics say, oh, this is gonna reignite, ignite the drug, uh, war. And its boosters say, oh, it's gonna get people into treatment. And the truth is, uh, what's gonna happen is gonna depend on how well we execute it, how tightly the regulations are written for the, uh, the police. And actually, the biggest one is gonna be where we invest. Because what all these folks in the judicial system said to me is, we don't have jail capacity and we don't have treatment capacity. Now, there is a little bit more money here for an opiate recovery center, which is great, and a little bit more money for LEAD, which is great. So I do think that those are some good steps. But so my ultimate feelings about this will actually be decided by the next steps that we take. Do we take the, uh, do we build the capacity to deliver on what Mayor Harrell is promising? Uh, and what his critics say is not gonna happen, or do we not? So I do support a public health approach, which generally means getting people into treatment. And then there's a lot of front doors to that. Sometimes those are through community referrals. Sometimes those are through police referrals. Sometimes that comes through diversion post-arrest. Uh, but I do think programs like LEAD, which lead the nation, uh, in terms of effectiveness, I'm so glad that that was born here. Lisa Dugard created that and actually got a MacArthur Genius Award for it. And, um, it's something we really need to scale and it's gonna take a lot more than that sort of million dollars a year from the opioid sentiment to actually, uh, do what we need to do. But I, I'm really focused on those next steps primarily. And I didn't see a, a reminder from you, Dinah, but I think, oh, we have two and a half minutes. Oh, well, this is wonderful. Well, another thing I will just say, uh, on a very sort of serious note here is, one is it's, A, it's really uncomfortable to be around this. We all know this. And also it, it hurts our hearts, right? We have a lot of compassion for people who are suffering. And I lost a friend to addiction who is a father of three people. And, you know, this is, I think this is one of those things where we just have to be rigorously practical. So it's sometimes tempting to think, you know, to use words like accountability, uh, for someone who has an addiction problem. But it just turns out that like, that's the platinum expensive, doesn't work plan, right? Like, we do know that getting people into recovery services actually is cheaper and more effective. And so that's really where I want to take this and deliver on, what I want to deliver on.
Thanks, Ron. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you keep going now with the next question about, um, police, which is, you know, continuing our theme of public safety. Several people also submitted questions wondering about your stances on the police. People want to know, do you or have you ever supported defunding the police? If and how you would support strengthening Seattle's Police Department as well as officer, officer morale? And how you feel about adding social service support to 911? So Ron, I'll give you the first chance to respond.
I think I got that all written down. I'll do my best. So, you know, while I appreciated that there was this moment, the, the sentiment in the national moment of, uh, racial reckoning uh, and sort of the values behind saying, okay, we should be listening to what the set of protesters have been, are saying. Because, you know, we have had a really racially inequitable policing, uh, the, we have done really racially inequitable policing in the United States and, and also here, right? We're under the thumb of the Justice Department because of it. Uh, so while I appreciate the values that were expressed there, um, I've always thought that defund was the wrong plan. Um, I have always thought that we did need to build up alternatives, but that the money for that shouldn't be coming out of the police department. I think if the eighties taught us anything, uh, it's that defunding government, uh, services doesn't make them better. And so, you know, in terms of what do we do now? One of the big challenges is, uh, the morale problem we have here and the hiring problem we have here is actually a national problem. So 85% of jurisdictions in Washington State are below their hiring targets. Bellevue, Everett and Tacoma have all called theirs crisis levels. Um, ours is worse, but big cities are worse everywhere in all the states, uh, than the, the small cities. And there are, are red states, uh, red cities like Memphis and, uh, uh, let's see, Oklahoma City, Tulsa, excuse me, Memphis, Tulsa, Atlanta that are off percentage-wise almost as much as us. So with hundreds of thousands of people leaving the profession, I also think we have to be really realistic. So SPD says, given that, with hiring bonuses, with marketing, doing our very best, you know, we could grow by 15 to 30 in the next year. And we're actually behind target on that, although we're starting to do better. So, you know, I do think plans to where we talk about getting 20 times that aren't realistic. I don't think that's, uh, helpful and I think it continues to disappoint the population. I do think we do need to staff as well as we can. And, um, uh, in terms of accountability, I mean, I think we know what good police reform looks like. We've seen it elsewhere. And we're actually making progress with King County Police Officers Guild or SPMA, the senior officers. We've just had some challenges with SFOG, which is sort of famously challenging on this front, right? Which is we need independent civilian oversight where there's no conflict of interest, where your buddies aren't judging you, right? And where you have real access to, uh, transparent information like subpoena power and discipline power. I was a CEO. I had a board. Uh, the president has Congress that can impeach them. Uh, the military has the president and the Secretary of Defense and they've all got people. We all need a boss, especially when we put a gun at someone's head. Um, I do support building up a fourth, uh, 911 response. There's 100 jurisdictions that have done it around the country. We're way behind on this silly. Uh, it is expensive. Everything's expensive. We also have to, yeah, actually raise the tax money to pay for it. But, um, we're beyond, uh, I mean, our, our 911 response times are absurd. SPD said 12, 12% of its calls could be easily triaged to a department like that now and an lieutenant assessment put it much higher. So there's a real opportunity between that and camera enforcement to also get stuff off their plate. So they can show up and have, uh, morale, better morale when they're doing the kind of stuff they're trained for and that they like doing, frankly.
And thanks, Ron. So, uh, same question to you, Maritza.
Thank you, Dinah. Um, I did not support the defund the police movement. I think it was really a mistake that the city council did that. And then also they said they would do, um, policing alternatives, which we have yet to see three years later. So, um, we really need to, and, and I'll say that I'm really glad to hear my opponent, uh, saying on this call that he's walking back his initial support for defunding the, the police, uh, support for council's actions to do that. You know, we do need to, I support the mayor's plan to, um, hire more officers. I feel really proud that I've gotten Mayor Harrell's endorsement in this race. We need to support alternatives to policing, like I said in the prior, my prior answer. You know, there are many times where a police officer is not trained to handle a mental health crisis. Um, and so we need to make sure that we have social workers and mental health providers that are also helping on the ground. And this is why I support the expansion of Health One, for instance. We do, you know, I've heard from police officers that, you know, the bonuses aren't working because, um, to the point in your question about how do we support police and morale, um, they're feeling, uh, like they don't- Because um, to the point in your question about how do we support police and morale, um, they're feeling uh, like they don't have support. And so um, I will say that on the accountability piece, we need to ensure that when officers are engaged in wrongdoing. We need to hold them accountable, full stop. There are officers who are doing a great job, and we need to make sure that we're also providing support to those officers that are doing a great job. Um, so uh, we also need to make sure, you know, as folks are retiring, we're also losing. Um, uh, uh, you know, uh, police officers, so it's not just about this morale piece. But it's also folks that are retiring, and so we need to make sure that young people want to do these jobs. They're good jobs, they're uh, uni- good ju- union jobs. So I support, um, for instance, the firefighters had an initiative um, with the Seattle Colleges. It's a certificate program, it's a two-year program, um, and the first graduating class was this year. And they could pull from that class for the firefighter um, academy. I think we not need to look at doing something similar with the police officers, so that we can get young people wanting to do these jobs. I also think it helps with the culture in the Police Department, because we need to provide training for the current officers. And we also need to change the culture overall, and if you get young people involved, um, and you have this kind of a program. It could help address the culture as well.
Thanks, Marissa, and because you invoked Ron in your uh, response, I did wanna give him an opportunity to address or clarify anything. Um, so, Ron, maybe you can take.
Yeah, as I said at the beginning of my statement, I really, I did respect the values of wanting to show solidarity. Uh, with the racial reckoning movement, and I said it was the wrong plan, and that's what I've said all along, and I'm on record, I think in the very first video. Uh, from this entire campaign, saying right values, wrong plan. So that statement about de- uh, walking back something is entirely factually incorrect. And I will add that to the fact checking site that we are building on my site for other false statements made about my campaign. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna move us from public safety to another issue that came up over and over again in questions, which is about housing. So I'm gonna start with a kind of a big picture question about zoning, and then ask some, some specific questions about homeowners and renters and aging in place. Um, and I will ask you a final question about homelessness, uh, so you know what to expect in this section. So zoning. Um, we have a person who is asking, and I'm gonna read this question more or less verbatim. The talk of more citywide rezoning to allow for big apartments seems incompatible. When we are already trying to cope with the impact of mandatory housing affordability and the state's passion of legislation that allows for increased units on single family law. Impacts go unaddressed, and adding another layer of zoning for even more density seems like overkill. What is your position on doing outreach to specific neighborhoods to understand concerns before supporting any more reason? Um, and I believe we started with Ron last time, so I will start with Marissa this time.
Thank you. I'll say that, first of all, in general, we need to be doing outreach um, to community. To community groups and residents in general, um, when we are, uh, you know, if uh, we're successful on the city council. And we're on the city council, that is a huge part of being on the city council, is making sure that we're doing. We're robust outreach to community, um, to residents and to community groups. So that we can learn what the needs are for uh, from community. We are there representing community. And we cannot represent community if we're not engaged with community, and we understand what the needs are and what the interests are. So that is really important. When I worked for Tom Rasmussen, I was um, working on his constituency outreach. So I did a lot of this work as a staffer in his office, and this is something that is really important to me. Is making sure that we're working for community, because I'm not doing this for myself, I'm doing this for the residents of the city. And of, and in particular of our district. So when we're working on these issues, on the housing issue and any issue. Um, it's important to engage with community. Regarding the zoning and the more housing, we do need more housing across the city. Um, and we've seen with H B eleven ten, which is now the law, um, uh, there is capacity. It, it allows for duplexes, um, quadplexes, and sixplexes in transit areas. Um, I do believe that we need to do um, uh, housing that is thoughtful. And in keeping with the uh, landscape of the neighborhoods, um, not each type of housing is gonna work in every neighborhood. Um, and so we need to make sure that as we are supporting more housing, that we are preserving the integrity of the neighborhoods. Um, in many ways, if you look, I always use the example of North Capitol Hill, where there are quadplexes that look like uh, uh, just big homes. Um, you can do it in a way that really preserves the integrity of the neighborhood and adds uh, uh, housing capacity for folks. So, um, you know, uh, we can do that. I don't think they're in Congress, we can have more housing, and we can also be thoughtful about it. And make sure that it preserves the integrity of our neighborhoods.
Great, Ron?
Uh, agreed. I mean, I think one is, we should always be consulting with our constituents. And I think one of the things that I really love about the work they've been doing with our current comp plan is how aggressively some of that outreach has been. So whereas traditionally, it was sort of a, my doors open, come and, come and comment, um, you know, actively gathering people in community centers. Working with elders in communities that typically are not uh, as, not having as much access to power, um, to get people's feedback. Like, that was, yeah, I think that comp plan got like eleven hundred comments or something, the last environmental impact statement. Anyway, this is the kind of thing we need to be listening to our residents on. As a board member of the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association, we've done, I can say we've done a lot of weighing in. And working with other uh, neighborhood groups and business groups, uh, V I As, et cetera, in uh, trying to look at things like good, healthy transportation, housing, et cetera. Uh, getting more affordable housing, and so I think uh, people's feedback is a key part of that. One of the nice things is that under state law, we are required, actually, uh, to. When we're doing our environmental impact statement is to get, is to incorporate feedback and look at things like um, the effects on utilities, the effects on traffic. Uh, the effects on neighborhoods, uh, tree canopy, uh, there's a whole uh, vehicle miles traveled per capita. There's actually a whole host of rules embedded into these big shifts, and the, so the proposed changes will be, if, uh, we'll all have to go through that process. Um, and so there is a, not only a process for comment there, but for creating a large, integrated, thoughtful approach. Um, some things I'd like to see in that, I would like to add though, is, you know, we, you know, it does need to address our housing deficit, that's true. Um, but I'm also really interested in things like lot coverage uh, limits. So right now, you know, we tend to squeeze growth into a few areas, and then that growth has to cover the entire lot and mow down all the trees. Um, there's a reason that the folks who are protecting uh, Luma, the cedar, were outgiving out my, um, giving out my little brochures. It's because, you know, one of the things I advocate is, I do advocate for broad housing change, but for limited lot coverage. So that we can actually reserve green space on every lot, as well as investing in uh, new green space. And then the other big thing related to design is particularly function. So when you do that right, and you allow things like single stair walkups. You can create more stacked flats, which are also much more age friendly. Um, I happen to live in a row house. Um, and so I know that all those stairs are not gonna be a forever thing for me, and um, we know that, you know, the Dutch and the European, other European cities have done a really good job. With stacks, stacked flats with limited lot coverage and significant green space to create sustainable, walkable, age-friendly cities, and I think that's the way we ought to go.
And sticking with the age-friendly, I'm sorry, did you wanna add something, Ron?
No, you were quiet for a second. I was gonna tell you you were muted, that's all.
Yeah. Um, so sticking with the uh, age-friendly theme, um, we know that most people wanna age in place. Um, vast majority of people would like to remain, remain independent for as long as possible in the homes they love and connected to the neighbors that they love, in the communities that they call home. So this question is a two-parter. The first part is, what will you do to protect older folks who bought a home, have paid high taxes on that home? And have lived and nurtured their neighborhood for many years? And the second question is, what will you do to prevent elder renters from being displaced from longtime rentals and communities? Um, so, Ron, I think it's your turn to start.
So to make sure I understand, so not a general, how are we gonna make it age-friendly Seattle, but specifically, what are we gonna do about older owners and older renters, these, okay? So, you know, I, I will just say, it's interesting, because last night I came home and my seven-year-old was sobbing. And, um, you know, I thought maybe he was throwing a food fit or something, and it turned out, uh, he was, uh, he was remembering his, his G pop. Great, uh, great grandpa who uh, went to Roosevelt High School, actually, died this last spring, and it's about, it's really close to his birthday, and they had a, a bond. He was ninety-five years old when he passed, and um, you know, and a lot of the issues that we're talking about came up across his life. He worked with people who were in this, who got displaced. He was an older adult who, who the taxes on his uh, home ended up being higher than the mortgage he paid, these kinds of things, right? And he also ended up, uh, for a period of being a shut-in, because he didn't have great infrastructure. Um, so, you know, for, for older adults who bought a home and paid taxes and committed, and uh, and been, you know, contributing to their communities for a long time. We have really set them up, uh, beca- by relying pretty much exclusively on sales and property taxes. And so, you know, when we have these fights, and people like me are out saying, we need more progressive taxes, that's because that's the only way we fund our priorities. Without relying on property taxes. Otherwise, everything is levy-based, and it hits those people hardest. And so we have to stop treating people who are living on fixed incomes, who happen to be sort of formally house-rich, but actually are not gonna liquidate it, or trying to live in their Asian place. Uh, we have to stop treating them as a piggy bank, and we have to actually, and we have the most progressive tax code in the country, so a few small steps isn't gonna hurt the business community. Uh, to make us, you know, maybe the forty-eighth worst, right? Uh, the other is for renters, uh, oh, I'm sorry, and then the other thing is, of course, I think we should be raising the exemption on property tax. The actual income level exemption, that will have, that will take uh, uh, work, I think, with the state. Um, on the renter side, I mean, I think the same stuff we do to protect other renters, right? Which is, uh, one is build abundant housing, so that rental prices aren't uh, rap, jumping up. Two is, I think we can put an excise tax in place to prevent rent, rent gouging, uh, that would be constitutional. It's kind of a long-related answer to that. Uh, and then three is direct rental assistance. We know that when people are uh, on the precipice, uh, that uh, there is very, very little. That has as much bang for its buck as a direct check to somebody. Um, and in fact, you know, if Section Eight were fully funded, we wouldn't have to worry about this, but it's not. And so I think, uh, we as a community need to step in and say, hey, these are, these are folks that are really living on the edge. We, we have, because of this, ended up with not only seniors who were displaced, but a surprising number of seniors who are on the street. Um, I've met many, many seniors on the street who do not have drug addiction issues or anything else, they've just ran out of money, right? And there was nowhere to go, and then unfortunately, in a city like Seattle, things like social security checks don't cover the rent. Uh, and so, uh, we have to do this, we have to do what it takes to bend the cost curve, and then in the meantime, we need to jump in and step in, prevent that.
Thanks, Ron, Marissa.
Yes, um, you know, I, my, my dad sadly passed away a few years ago. Um, and my mom, you know, because my dad had a union job, and not everyone does, but he did, and he had a pension. My mom is not destitute today because of my dad's pension, but she is living on fixed income. Which is what most of our older adults are doing right now, and why these issues, um, and addressing these issues are so critical. Um, I think that we do need to figure out ways to help um, our older adults age in place. Um, and that's why I was really um, glad to see, and I supported um, and, and support uh, Councilmember Peterson's. Proposal for a capital gains uh, tax to replace the water tax, um, because that is something I think that could help. Um, with folks living on fixed income. Um, you know, uh, the other thing we need to do. Um, you know, in terms of the older renters and displacement, is we really do need to look at anti-displacement strategies. For our older folks, and for folks in general who are getting displaced across the city, um, and in the district. So we need to look at anti-displacement strategies, including um, housing vouchers for folks. Um, and we need to make sure that we have housing options for folks living in the district. Um, because we know that in some of these, um, the, the housing doesn't match being able to uh, live in place. So we really need to work with our older um, uh, adults in the district to make sure that we are addressing these needs. And I think this can happen, um, uh, you know, be, uh, we, we need to work with um, a community members. To find solutions for these, uh, to address these problems for our older populations.
Thank you, and um, I, as was mentioned, older adults are the fastest, we use the fastest growing homeless population. And so, do you wanna ask you both about this issue? What do you think is the most effective way to address homelessness? And how will you address mental health and drug addiction experienced by people who are currently unhoused? And are there any jurisdictions out there that you look to as role models for success stories in this space? Um, Marissa, I will start with you.
Sorry, I was writing down the questions, I would miss any of the points. Um, you know, in terms of our unhoused populations. Um, uh, like I mentioned earlier, we really do need to have um, alternatives. Um, uh, for folks to bring people indoors. But it's inhumane to leave people sleeping on streets where there are no amenities, there's no sanitation. Where our, um, you know, youth, um, and women and older folks are vulnerable in those encampments. Um, and so we really need to have temporary solutions while we wait for permanent supportive housing to be built. And so that includes um, more investment in temporary sheltering, hoteling, and tiny homes. Um, in terms of the mental health uh, crisis and drug addiction, we need to support more investments in services. And we need to invest in alternatives um, to policing. Uh, so we have folks um, that can go out and work with these individuals to get them into temporary sheltering. And to get them into services. Um, you know, when you ask about jurisdictions that are doing this. Well, to be honest, what I've seen across the country, this is a problem, um, and no one has come up with so, the, the, the thing. That will work, and you know, in terms of the how, the unhoused, you know, we have a huge fentanyl problem. Folks are dying every day, um, and, and a lot of that is amongst our unhoused populations. So we really need to work together to figure out solutions for this fentanyl crisis, and we really do need to um, get folks into services. And we need to work with folks to accept those services, which is why I think we really need to continue to invest in. Alternatives to policing and the, and the mental health um, providers and, and the. Uh, social workers who can help talk to folks, um, and help get folks into the services that they need.
Thank you, Ron.
Sorry, okay, well, that is a big question, if I've ever heard one. So how am I going to reduce flow into homelessness and address? Uh, 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 the mental health and behavioral health issues, drug issues. Um, so starting with homelessness, um, you know, uh, the wonderful thing about this. Is we can learn from other jurisdictions, and us, uh, researchers have been studying, uh, what other jurisdictions have been doing for decades. And there's a lot of good peer-reviewed uh, data out there, um, and so we know that the way forward is a three-legged stool of supply subsidies and stabilizers. So on the supply side, it's making sure we're building housing as fast as people get here, which bends the curve on cost growth. Um, uh, and, and that means is a mix of zoning reform, like we talked about earlier, permitting reform. Right now, it can take up to two to three years to build a building. Um, in Tacoma, it's half that, and Houston it's six weeks, to, not to build it, I'm sorry to get the permit. Um, you know, so there's some, there's some supply-side reforms. The other thing is, is the jurisdictions that are, so, successful jurisdictions typically do that well. They also typically do investments in affordable housing more aggressively. I know it feels like we're spending a lot of money, but actually, it's a percentage of GDP. Relative to many other jurisdictions, we really aren't, um, it's, uh, especially for expensive cities. So some of that is just more aggressive investments sourced through things like progressive income, not so much of a reliance on property taxes. I do support the current housing levy, but I think uh, future incremental spending should come from progressive taxes, not people on fixed incomes. Um, in things like affordable housing, social housing, tiny homes, et cetera. And then the last are the stabilizers, like I meant earlier, mentioned earlier, rent, rental assistance, um, Marissa mentioned, um, right? Uh, anti-displacement measures, one of the sort of best ones out there is something called the Right to Return Ordinance, um, so there's a lot of work that could be done there. Places I admire, uh, Finland has done a lot with direct rental assistance, Tokyo, uh, and Houston. I've done, and Chicago have done a really good job on matching supply to demand, neighborhood by neighborhood. Uh, Vienna has, and Montgomery, Maryland, done a great job with social housing, um, so the mixed income housing. And Montreal has do, done fantastic work using a mid-scale, this uh, really like humans, human uh, sized uh, middle housing. To keep its housing supply healthy. Um, I think Boston, in New York, in the U S, have done a nice job in terms of really aggressive investments in affordable housing. Although the recent influx of Venezuelan immigrants has made it hard for the New Yorkers to keep up. Um, on the mental health side, I mean, you know, we have half as many health beds as we had in the nineties, we have eight hundred thousand more people in the county. Uh, I had a grandma who lived in a time when there was capacity, and she lived a fairly normal life with occasional hospitalizations. And I had an uncle post that capacity, who, when he would go manic and there was no place for him to go, would hurt people, and he ended up uh, dying because of it. So I think really actually scaling our investments in those, um, and not hiding from what that costs is extremely important.
Thank you. And then, so speaking of costs, um, we do have a question just about economic security in general. We all know that the cost of living in Seattle has risen rapidly over recent years. And it can be challenging for anyone to maintain financial stability in this climate and especially for people who are living on fixed incomes, as many older adults are. Do you have any plans? We've talked a little bit about housing, but do you have any other plans, uh, for keeping the cost of living down in Seattle? And I am sort of forgetting now, but I think we started with Ron last time.
No, it was me. I think, yeah. So Marissa gets some time to, yeah, it's gonna be fair. Now, now I'll, I'll come up with mine on the fly. Um, cost of living. So I think the biggest, uh, not only the biggest issue, cost of living issue here in Seattle is housing. But also it's one of the most runaway. So the things I just said are really, really key. Sort of second, uh, that may not be as relevant to this population, but it may be for caregiving grandparents is childcare. Childcare is more expensive than college in many places, uh, and it is, uh, unavailable for a lot of families and it is extraordinarily expensive. So I, uh, getting, building a sustainable workforce there with, um, living wages and actually making it so that it's affordable for people is going to cost tax money. The other, uh, two other big areas I think we can save, uh, people on fixed incomes money are transportation. Uh, we know that a, a city built, uh, for, with a disability lens is an accessible, is an easily accessible city. And it's a city where people don't need a car, uh, no matter what their ability level is. And in fact, I've had, uh, uh, I've had a, let's see, the leader of the Disability Mobility Initiative, who is a quadriplegic, out canvassing with me in the city. And we've been navigating some of the hostile infrastructure together. You know, Daria Farivar, who comes from Disability Rights Washington, and is our forty-sixth legislator, uh, who endorsed me as well, has been campaigning for me. And, you know, I think if we don't build our cities so that they are highly accessible, A, they will be hostile to all people. Um, uh, an accessible city is, uh, is a safer city for everyone. But then they will be hostile to all people at some stage in their life and they will require us to spend our way out of the problems we create, bad infrastructure and, and transportation costs are a huge part of people's lives. Now, this is going to require us to do things like make our buses safer and accessible and frequent and all of the things that we were talking about earlier. Um, the last one is taxes. So I'm a pretty, you know, I'm a pro-tax Democrat. But like I mentioned earlier, uh, I think the fact that, uh, you know, we have a set of lobbyists downtown who have made it so that, uh, all of our, uh, taxes are pretty much continue to come from property taxes because they are just adamant that nothing should be a progressive tax. I think that's, uh, criminal. Um, and so we need to not be doing that. Um, and we need to be, uh, doing things like moderate, moderate expansions to jumpstart. I agree with Alex Peterson's, uh, top-up of the capital gains tax, but I think actually direct assistance rather than to water bills, which will also affect a lot of like medium-sized, uh, businesses that have a fair amount of money. Um, and there's already exemptions for low income. So I would, I would target it a little differently, but, um, I agree with Marissa that that's an opportunity for progressive revenue. I've named a few others in some articles online I've written, um, but I think, uh, we can't continue to ask, uh, seniors to fix, to fund our libraries and schools and housing and everything else.
Thank you. Marissa?
I think that the cost of living, the, the huge, um, the most expensive thing is housing. And so we really need to address, um, our housing, um, costs across the city. We know that when we have more housing supply, um, then we have demand, the price of housing goes down. So we do need to, um, uh, look at, um, uh, you know, building more housing across the city. Of course, as I said earlier, we do need to be thoughtful, um, uh, about it, um, and, and preserve, uh, uh, the neighborhoods. But I do think we have to address this housing issue because it really is, um, what is making the city really unaffordable for folks. So we do need to address affordable housing. You know, in terms of older adults, I also think we need to, um, uh, uh, invest in transportation and more transportation options. You know, I come from a city where we had robust transportation. I didn't have a driver's license till I was thirty years old. I didn't need it. And the older folks, um, in my neighborhood took buses and the train, uh, et cetera. And so we really need to expand bus routes, um, and we need to, to build those extensions on the light rail to make sure that folks, um, and older folks, um, have access to better transportation across the city. And I, I think that will, um, help as well, um, with the, with the costs. So I really, I mean, but I think, like I said, I think the housing affordability issue is the hugest. It is the living on fixed income if you're an older adult. And, you know, making sure that we're looking at ways to help, um, folks living on fixed income be able to address, um, some of the cost of living, uh, uh, challenges that they're facing. Like the, but, you know, replacement of water tax with, uh, with the capital gains tax because we know that the water tax is high and that, um, means that folks living on, on fixed incomes, um, are also paying that higher water tax. So things of that nature. And I look forward to having more conversations about this and seeing how we can reduce cost of living for our folks that are living on fixed income, uh, you know, like my mom is, who doesn't live here. But this is an issue that's across the country, right? As, um, populations are aging, um, and living longer. So we, you know, look forward to working with community, um, on these issues.
Thank you. And, um, both of you, um, mentioned different elements of transportation. So I'm going to ask you that question, mostly going to just share with the audience and with both of you. We started a bit late and the senior center is happy to let us stay a few minutes longer. So I have just, I think, three more questions for, for you, if that's okay with the candidates. If you have time to hang with us, uh, then we can, we can get through everything. So in regards to transportation, um, having the ability to move around safely is important. And it makes sure that folks can stay socially connected and engaged, access medical appointments, go shopping, meet their other needs. Many older adults continue to drive in their later years, but many stop driving and rely on public transit and other options. Specifically, our attendees want to know, do you think the needs of older or more mobility, excuse me, or more mobility-challenged adults differ from the needs of younger people? And what policies are you proposing to address these? And in your answers, please specifically consider pedestrian needs, including street crossing locations, sidewalks closed for construction and the proliferation of scooters and e-bikes in our community. So Marissa, this is your time to go first.
Thank you. Yes, transportation, um, uh, it does differ for older adults. In general, I mean, I'm a big proponent of public transportation. So to me, everyone should be using public transportation, um, as much as they can where possible because it's also a climate issue and, and we know that transportation is the biggest, um, uh, has the biggest impact on climate. And so we really need to be encouraging people to take, um, public transportation, which is why I feel so strongly that we need to expand our transportation, um, option, options across the city. And that includes, um, for helping our older adults who no longer, um, you know, want to drive. It's really expensive, by the way, to own a car. And so if you don't need to do that, then that is really going to help folks that are living on fixed incomes. And we really need to make sure that those transportation options have accessibility. Because we don't want to be in a situation where we're, we're expanding transportation, but it's hard to get folks with mobility issues into the transportation that they're choosing, uh, to take. So we need to make sure that at all those light rail stations, the escalators are working, the elevators are working. I've, you know, ride light rail frequently and oftentimes either the escalator's not working or the elevator's not working. So we need to have working, robust working relationships with sound transit and metro to make sure that everything is, is working like it should to really help, uh, folks, um, uh, that are using public transportation. I also support the Vision Zero goals. We need to make sure that we're making it safe for bike, uh, for bikers. I mean, um, um, some older folks I know are biking, others are not, but in general, um, and for walkers more importantly. So I support the timing of the lights, which allow for walkers to, to get across the street before cars are able to go through. I know we have those timing, um, uh, uh, things at the lights across, um, the city at, at different places, but I don't think it's robust. And so we really need to make it robust to, to aid folks, um, when they're crossing the street. And we need to make sure that we're getting, you know, those scooters and electric bikes that people are able to rent to be using the bike paths and keeping the sidewalks clear for our folks who are walking on the sidewalks and keeping it safe for folks that are walking on the sidewalks.
Thank you, Marissa. Ron?
Yes, I, I just received a reminder that I do have a three, a hard stop. But, um, they are very excited, uh, to answer this question. So I have a lot of passion around, uh, on sustainable, accessible transportation. So I was on the, uh, Citizen Oversight Panel for Sound Transit for a number of years. Uh, one of my boards is, uh, Seattle subway, where we've been working on accessible design for stations, station access specifically. And then, uh, through my work at Futurerise on comprehensive planning, on integrating transit planning into housing planning. And then also at the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association, I work on, uh, pedestrian safety, actually. So identifying where we need those, uh, those, uh, leading pedestrian intervals at, at lights. Uh, we've also been very successful now with S dot coming in and, uh, uh, removing some of right turn on reds, uh, which is a great. We need to accelerate that across the city. Um, sort of the, the question though, is it different, uh, for older adults? Yes, uh, you know, obviously depends on, uh, what's going on for that older adult. But in general, yes. You know, over time, we know that a reaction time, uh, can slow, uh, particularly, uh, so that catching a foot quickly, you know, when somebody trips, you know, as we get older, we're more likely to not be able to catch ourselves. We're a little more likely to be, to fall, uh, the vision starts to get a little more impaired. Yeah. And so, uh, some of these, uh, mobility challenges, we have to really build, we have to build around them. So, you know, for people that are still in cars, I think it's ensuring that the spaces that we have are accessible spaces, right? Really prioritizing those. But for the people that, um, need to come out of cars, which ends up being all of us usually, if we live a nice long time. You know, again, I mentioned earlier that, uh, disability-friendly infrastructure is the, is the best kind generally. But it's the only kind that can work, uh, for this part of the population. So as I mentioned, I was with, uh, Cecilia, who does the disability, who runs the Disability Mobility Initiative. And while, you know, most older adults don't end up in a wheelchair necessarily, um, you know, just canvassing in Wallingford, obviously a lot of homes have stairs, but just the public, uh, infrastructure is very, very poor. There's just not curb cuts in a lot of places. And so, you know, we were doing quite a dance. So, you know, in terms of how to make the pedestrian environment safe, one is we do need frequent fast transit. We need better lighting and we also need, uh, to commit to Vision Zero. And all the Vision Zero oriented organizations have endorsed me because I, I do endorse, uh, you know, no right turn on red, narrowed crossings, narrowed streets, uh, engineering streets for slowness, not speed, so street trees. You know, raised, raised crosswalks, uh, mid, mid-block intervals, these kinds of things are the most effective for actually making people safe. And I think the Dutch are the example here, uh, for how to make a city a, a safe place to move around, uh, no matter what your age is.
Thank you. And, uh, I want to be respectful of folks' time, so I'll just share with the candidates that we did also receive questions. People are wondering about your positions and ideas to facilitate and foster a sense of community in neighborhoods, investing in social programming, uh, for older adults in particular and in this district. As well as, uh, your ability to reduce gridlock on the Seattle City Council. So just know that those are, uh, ideas and issues that folks, um, have raised. But in the interest of time, I think I will just invite, and if it's okay with both of you, to replace your maybe traditional closing statements with just one more general question, which is, what would you do to make our city more age-friendly? And since I think we had Ron start with opening statements, so in this case I'll have Melissa start, Marissa.
Yes, thank you. Um, well, you know, we've talked a lot today, um, about, um, making Seattle more age-friendly. I think, you know, making sure that we're addressing the needs of our older populations, um, uh, ability to age in place, to reduce the cost of living, um, for folks, uh, uh, older adults, so that they're able to age in place in their homes, um, if possible. And to make sure that we're really giving focus to, um, to, uh, to working with older population in Seattle. You know, a long time ago, I'm so happy to see age-friendly Seattle, um, the, yes, age-friendly Seattle initiative. I know the city many years ago used to have a, a mayor's office for senior citizens. And, you know, City Councilmember Tom Rasmussen used to be the director there. I know that changed and I know that, that, that the Seattle, um, uh, uh, has now, you know, a resolution whereby you all, um, were created. And I think that's really excellent. I think we really need to continue to work with you all. You have a vision for, um, how to make the city, um, age-friendly and we need to work with you and with community to make sure that we're, that we are, um, having the proper things on that vision and that we are really working with you to implement that vision. And so, you know, to me, it's the housing, the transportation that we've talked about, um, uh, the accessibility issues and making sure, you know, those three pillars of economic security, health and wellness and social connectivity, that's the framework of what you've put together, that we as city council members are, um, uh, uh, giving focus to that, working with you and making sure we're able to implement those things.
Thanks, Marissa. Ron?
Thank you so much for having us today. Uh, to make this an age-friendly city, I think, you know, we all agree we need housing that's affordable because, um, as our income stops growing and our housing costs go up, uh, that, you know, the math on that does not work out. So, you know, we discussed earlier how that's going to be a mix of getting supply right, of aggressively investing in subsidies and then putting a stabilization mechanisms in place for people who are likely to fall, uh, into either homelessness or get evicted or displaced. It also means homes and buildings that are accessible and livable. So I mentioned earlier, uh, success that, uh, European nations have had and some, uh, some, and some pockets around the country have had with building things like stacked flats where, uh, where homes are one level, but there's multiple homes on a lot. And, uh, that has worked very, very well for aging in place in, uh, in many cities around the world. And, uh, one thing a lot of places are doing is also working on moving these into complete neighborhoods, right? So making it so that you can meet all your needs within about a five-minute walk. And, you know, Barcelona actually has a goal of having, uh, eighty-five percent of people's trips be in neighborhood, uh, in the next few years. Now, we're a little ways from that, um, but we, uh, but making it so that people can meet their needs, uh, with close, accessible infrastructure is extremely important. I think we need trees to keep us cool. I mentioned a way to, uh, ways to preserve trees, but, uh, we can't preserve our way to a thirty percent canopy. We've only got twenty-seven percent. So that means investing tens of millions of dollars in planting new trees and nurturing them. Um, and particularly in the areas of the city that are bare, where our elders who, uh, are from marginalized communities are more exposed to heat island effects. We need to make it as easy, safe, reliable and convenient to get around the city without a car as it is with one, no matter a person's ability, right? And that's, uh, that's a nice one-liner, but that's a radical, uh, that would take a radical, different kind of investment in terms of, uh, reallocating our right-of-way of, of re-investing in our infrastructure so that it's accessible and ensuring levels of frequency and service, uh, that we don't currently have in our transportation system. And, you know, Marissa mentioned earlier, and it's a great point about, um, escalators, like that, uh, we, I know people from inside Sound Transit were in the room when they decided what kind of escalators to build. And they, they could have picked the more expensive industrial ones that don't break. And they decided like, ah, let's, let's save some money, right? So we also need to not be penny-wise and sound foolish. And then last, we need to make sure this is a safe city because everyone needs to know that when they go out, they're going to be okay. And I think when we get all those things right, uh, this will be a great city to age in place in. And I hope to do that exactly, thing myself.
Well, thank you so much to both of you. It's exactly three thirty. Um, and thank you to all of you who tuned in today. And this recording will be available on the Age Friendly Seattle YouTube channel. So, um, we'll send it out as a recap of this event and you are welcome to send it to your networks. If you know friends and family who live in District Four, um, we are happy to share that. Thank you, Marissa and Ron, for being here, um, and rolling with all the punches that stay brought. Really appreciate it. Um, and we'll go ahead and log off, but I'm sure folks can follow up with your campaigns if they have further questions. Again, I want to remind people in the room to use your democracy vouchers. You have that tool. And, uh, check with our staff in the back on how to do some. All right.
Thank you so much. Feel better, Marissa.